All right, good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of Lee County Board of Commissioners to order. Thank you very much for being here tonight. At this time, we'll ask if I can put Commissioner Odom on the spot to lead us in the invocation. And Judge Commissioner Dodson isn't here yet?
Let us pray. Lord, again, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for your goodness to us. Lord, bless this meeting. Bless those involved in this meeting. Grant us the wisdom to do what is right for the citizens of Lee County. Lord, we ask you to be with those in need. Lord, we pray for those that are down and out. Lord, we ask you to just guide and direct us and keep us in your care, for we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Doc. Okay, we're gonna start here, but we've got some commissioners that have, that are on their way. It's a Monday for everybody, I think. Are there any additional items to the agenda?
There I have a appreciation I'd like to add.
Okay, we'll just do F under new business? Okay. Any other items added to the agenda? Okay, is there a motion?
Let me ask one quick question.
Sure.
Any reason we can't move E up to C, following C? She's gonna be doing C.
Right, okay. I think that we'll do that, yeah. Okay, we'll just switch D and E. Okay?
Moving to approve the agenda.
Okay, all right. There's a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. The approval of consent agenda.
We'll go approve.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Was there any public comments? Okay, new business. So, we'll get right into new business and I'd like to recognize Ms. Joy Thrash. See, Mr. Joyce is here too, to give us the monthly update from the temporary growth alliance. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. And we also have Crystal MacIver, our Director for Visitor Services, here as well. So, thank you for this opportunity to provide you an update on the Growth Alliance, a little bit more extensive than just a typical economic development report. But I thought it was important for you to hear some other activities that we have going on at the organization. And I provided, I think it was placed at your place, is an agenda for the items I would go over. Added a couple of things, but not many. So, as you can see, it's a list. I'll just move through it as quickly as possible. So, I wanted to mention on our audit, we have, our audit RFP is being finalized. And we've actually used our version, Mary, and what the Jetport had used for their RFP. And I'm just getting final approval and it should go out this week. We are on track for the audit to take place during the July August timeframe. Office space, looking into office space on the floor we're currently on, hoping that we can expand into a couple of other offices that we need to provide for staffing, for office space that they would need. And then, I don't think I had it on there, but I wanted to update, especially Commissioner Connect on the minutes that he had asked about, being able, the minutes that we provided our board meetings, excuse me. And I wanted to update you and let you know that we had received an opinion back from our legal counsel. And with the Growth Alliance established as a private organization, and although we receive private funds, we're not subject to North Carolina open meeting laws and have been advised to adhere to the standards established by North Carolina in regards to corporate records. This allows for inspection of specific documents at our office to those who would request it. And copies of minutes are provided to board members at the regular meetings. Moving on to events, I wanted just to let you know, just to give you an overall idea of activity, that to date, we've held 33 events. That's included eight ribbon cuttings, our public policy luncheons, leadership Sanford, an investor event, our banquet, and five special events that we participated in, in the community. And to date, we've recorded over 1,200 in attendance at our events, which expects, we will exceed our attendance from 2016 for events. In marketing, we've started tracking our website analytics. And though there are many items we can track on this, there's four items we are currently looking at, and that's website hits for our site. In April, we received 45 of those, excuse me, 4,500. And we know that new searches are continuing to increase from our website. 67% of the traffic we obtain is coming from a Google search. It's an organic search that comes directly to our website, not through a link from someone else, but directly to our website. And then, we're also able to look at the top five viewed pages from our website. And I can tell you, one of them was the Lidl information that we had. So, we know people were interested in that as well. And then, also, we're able to look at the city that the person was located in when they looked at our information. And we've actually had over 700 cities that have tapped into our information. Now, the top five, Atlanta's actually number four. And then, that can change each month, but that's what the report was for April. So, we'll continue to track that. And since the beginning of the year, we have been featured in publications over 40 times. That's included the TBJ Business North Carolina, Bevel Observer, and of course, the Herald. And then, the last thing I'll cover under the operations is, I hope you all have had an opportunity to read the CEO report that's now provided to you once a week. There was one of them that was given to you in your package. I know you probably don't have time to read the whole thing, but I do want to provide it to you each week, just so you can peruse through it. You can see new activity. But as you're reading through this report, know that it's activity that's taken place that week that we're focused on as a staff. And that can change from week to week. And sometimes, you'll see that we're working on activity that might be for an event taking place in September. We've actually started working on our annual meeting. So, it is nowhere near the detail of activity that takes place. We're hitting the top items. But I do hope that it's providing you information about what's going on in our organization. Moving along to visitor services, that Crystal manages for us, I'm proud to say that we have now three publications for Sanford and our North Carolina Visitor and Welcome Centers. That's 12 sites across the state that we've never had that level of exposure before. So, that just is one example of many of what can take place when you have someone that's able to be dedicated to doing those type of items. And then, on visit and C, the North Carolina website, for our area, we have approximately 40 items listed. And with 14 of those being recent additions, again, from the new staff that's been able to work with folks to add that. It consists of attractions, dining, events, facilities, golf, lodging, just different variety of things that we have. But Crystal's worked hard, especially when events are taking place and when we have locations that people might be interested in to work with these folks to get their listing on the website. Event participation, as far as visitor services, for the first time, we participated in the Side by Side event, as well as Arts and Vines Festival, and had a booth there to welcome folks. And it was really a benefit, especially at Side by Side. Most of those folks were from out of state, and many were from out of country. And we were able to offer them opportunities for referrals of what they could do downtown, restaurants they could eat at. And the next day, they were coming back, letting us know that they did participate in our referrals and eat in the local downtown area. So, it was nice to have, be able to have a booth there and provide them information. Talking about the Welcome Center, I'm trying to work on utilizing the lobby space in the Buggy Factory to have someone there that can greet folks as they come in that building, sometimes looking for information on the area. Oftentimes, looking for things from the Chamber of Commerce as well. And if we can have someone that's there to greet them, it would just make it a nicer presentation for them to be able to walk in the door on Chatham Street and be greeted by someone versus wondering where they're supposed to go to get the information that they need. Partnership with the schools, I don't think that was listed on your agenda, but I do want to mention that because that is something that's ongoing that we're rather proud of. When we looked at other visitor centers across the state, we would oftentimes find things for children in the form of coloring books. And we've been able to work with our school system, with our high school arts students, to start developing a coloring book of our own. And instead of having it just done on computer drawings, we're actually using artists from the school and potentially reaching out to some artists in the community that can make these renderings and then put it in this coloring book. And the goal is to have one completed, our first one completed, by the time the school starts and be able to give them to our first graders to help them start learning of activities that could take, they can do in Lee County and then hopefully take that home to their parents as well.
Okay. Excuse me. I have a question I need to ask. When you go back, you were talking about the Buggy Factory. Are you talking about moving over to the Buggy Factory? I was making a note on something else.
No, we would still have the visitors, still, the goal is to have the Visitor Center at the depot.
All right.
But until we are able to make that happen, having a Welcome Center in the lobby area of the Buggy Factory where we're currently located.
On the first door off of Chatham Street.
Is it charged for it?
No, sir.
We're already paying for it.
Yeah, the city and county already.
That's fine.
And I want to also mention, the funds and as far as pertaining to the visitor services, we actually keep a separate ledger on the visitor services fund, separate from our operating account, and also keep those funds separate, in a bank account, separate from our operating funds. Also, we'll mention that the funding that was given for the CCEP signage, we keep separate as well. But we have just over $58,000 remaining in those funds. And those funds have been utilized for marketing, website, participation in events with North Carolina and other states, marketing items that we've produced and salaries for the staff specifically for visitor services. There's no charge that we've been utilizing for the staff that's assisting. And I'll just show you that we do have this, this is one of the brochures in the Welcome Centers now that say, "Welcome to Sanford." And you open it, and it talks about activities here. And then, something that we've heard was very well needed and wanted, we now have a downtown Sanford map with other ideas of people. And this is one of the things that we were giving out at the events that we were participating in, Side by Side and Arts and Vines Festival, which we also referred a lot of folks from the Arts and Vines Festival was interested in coming downtown as well. Moving on to Chamber of Commerce activity, we have improved current processes for retention and added new recruitment processes. We're utilizing the overall staff in this process. Everybody plays a role in it. There are steps that we utilize and actually have started implementing a new software, web-based software that was no cost, but that came about from suggestion of our millennials in the office. So, it was nice to have that addition with them. But since the beginning of April, when we put this in place and guided prospective members through this process, we have gained 20 new members from putting this in place. And our goal is to have 570 members by the end of the year, which would put us over a, over 100% retention rate. Currently, we have 532 members. In the Chamber, we've also are preparing for our Board of Directors nominations for the new board members in July. And we've gone through a bylaws update, which was over a few months of intense activity of getting those updated to correspond with the Growth Alliance bylaws as well. There are four active committees on the Chamber of Commerce. The Marketing Committee works in conjunction with our Saga Overall Marketing Committee, and we have great participation on that to give us advice and feedback on the activities that we do in marketing. We have an Education and Workforce Committee. And their goal this year was to help us to become a work-ready certified community. And as you know, that took place. Our Membership Committee is, consists of our ambassadors, and they work hard representing us and also reaching out to our members. They visit them a couple of times a year, and we have that on a rotation. We keep up with that as well. And then, our Small Business Advocacy Committee is focused on items for small business. And some of the items that they've covered this year is looking into the idea of some of the items that they've covered this year is looking into the idea of small business law for companies, but we realize that there's a resource for that already, and so we're able to know that we didn't have to recreate something that was already out there. Then we've also looked at the traffic pattern at US One fifteen five oh one, because there were some current concerns raised by businesses out there as to how that would impact their business. We've actually had meetings with DOT on that. And then they were instrumental in giving us guidance on our expo that you've come to know, and we're doing it this year as a business showcase that will have a little bit of a different feel. Out of fifty-two booths, I think, we've already sold thirty-seven of them since the end of June, so we have good interest in that. And then on Economic Development, Bob had passed out the pyramid that we do for you each month, and it talks about the different activities and what we're looking at. And I will tell you that last month in March was a record, excuse me, April was a record high in activity with a recent record high. I'm not going to say it was the overall ever record high, but recently, with sixteen requests for information, and typically, we have about eight to ten. And so this month is returning back to our normal level of request. We had six additional wins in April, and this is a lot because of leasing space that was signed, and we're able to start moving forward. Some of them's already under construction. One's operations already started, but this represents ninety-two additional jobs and over seventy million dollars in investment. You've not really heard anything public about that because we have to wait for the entity to allow us to make a public announcement, and we do track that to encourage them to help us and to let us make an announcement. Ninety-one projects so far are activities that we've had in two thousand seventeen. As you'll see how they're distributed, I think it was twenty-five that fell off of the, came on and fell off for different reasons. But for this year, we've had thirty-six, we currently, excuse me, have thirty-six active projects compared to twenty-two last year. Some of those might not be listed. That says of April. That's an increase of seventy percent, and from April two thousand fifteen, we had eighteen. So activity is definitely increasing, and the momentum of the work that we're doing is starting to pay off just in the activity that we're seeing. I will mention the North Carolina Railroad Study. This study took about a month with Bob working with the North Carolina Railroad System, providing locations in Lee County with rail access, and then they'll make a determination of what they consider the top areas to market. And so this will just be another tool for us to market our area. But I will, would like to give an applause to the GIS Department with the county, Mr. Crumpton, for their invaluable assistance, and just to say that this is another benefit of all us being in the same building, working together. Select NC is now the website that we go to to list all of our products that we have available for site selectors and industry to look at. It had been known as Access NC when it was with Department of Commerce. Now, EDP NC manages that, and we've provided them updates, and we've actually sent out information to our commercial realtors. Now, we're working through that. We sent out, how many letters last week, Bob? About twenty-nine?
Twenty or twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty-five letters on Friday to commercial companies to ask them if they'd like to have something listed, take them through that process. Other program of work activity, I'll just highlight some. Marketing, Lee County, this week, we'll complete a three-week marketing initiative, Prelude to Progress, and that was compiled, that compiled all the efforts that's taken place, beginning in two thousand eight with a shared vision of growth and prosperity for Lee County. And I want to thank you for your efforts in helping us realize the success the community's seeing today with all of the work that's taken place with everyone working together. The next thing I want to mention is workforce, and can tell you that one of the top items we hear from site selectors and industry is the concern for workforce. That's not just in our area, that's just overall across the country. And this is also an item that Meg Moss, the Chamber, our Director for the Chamber, receives a lot of requests for, that companies sometimes have a challenge in finding the workforce that they need. So we connect them to workforce resources. I'm currently working more directly with Fort Bragg and the exiting military to understand the true availability of soldiers. And for example, there was a study done that said of the exiting military, it's really about twenty percent that can be expected to be retained in North Carolina. So when you think eight to ten thousand exiting soldiers, but then you narrow that down to twenty percent, that cuts down what you have available. And then also, you have to consider what's the cost to hire them, because an E-four coming out is expecting to make around forty-five thousand dollars. So that changes what you can provide them as far as a job. And then I'll also talk about workforce. The education system is key, and not only workforce, not, the education system not only for workforce, but for residential growth as well. And Lee County Schools and CCCC play a vital role. And I will say that additions to the schools such as Wicker Elementary is critical not only to education, but economic development, recruitment, and residential growth. That is one of the main things that folks are looking at as well. Our Residential Task Force has met three times to begin the process of attracting high-quality residential development. And again, with the professionals we've met, school systems is the top necessity for relocating families. And I think sometimes when we're able to sit down with them and let them know what we have in our school systems and the asset we have there, a few of them have been surprised and pleasantly surprised, so we look forward to being able to continue to educate them on what we have available. And then under Product and Infrastructure Development, and this is my last item, just to let you know, the CCEP signage is moving forward. We're working on getting the permits, all of that stuff behind the scenes that doesn't allow a shovel to get on the ground, but we're hoping that that can happen by the end of the month. And we'll let you know that the Triassic Site has been recertified by the state. We've actually received the certificate, so we went through that process. We're looking at updating the incentive policy and just in discussion now for draft versions that we're interacting with the city and county staff. And then also, just starting preliminary conversation as to what would a spec building policy look like and include, and that's very, in the very early discussions of that and just coming together, really looking at other communities and what they're doing. So that is my quick report for the Growth Alliance. I appreciate the opportunity, and I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Joe, I have one. What's the latest update? You know, on the tourist tax.
That is, thank you for asking. I actually had that on my list and must have looked over. It's right now currently in the Finance Committee, and it's been there, I know, since April the twenty-fourth. So we continue to monitor that and looking for forward motion on that. And I will mention, we just also, was approval given on that hotel?
Plans have been submitted.
The plans have been submitted for the hotel, and I would have to ask Bob for the area. It's.
Fairfield Inn and Suites.
Thank you. So that's a be a hundred and five-bed facility. I'm sorry?
In the Northview area.
And it's what again?
Fairfield Inn and Suites.
Fairfield Inn, mhm.
I was looking at the plans today. It's right across from the Oaks Apartments.
We did a very rough estimate on what that would look like if we had an occupancy tax, the three percent that would go to tourism, based on a hundred and five beds, seventy percent occupancy rate, and just an average, you know, a hundred dollars night, and that would probably be about eighty thousand dollars a year.
You've been busy.
It's a lot of fun.
It's a lot going on.
There is. Any other questions or discussion?
I will tell you, we have a great staff in place that everyone is dedicated to what they do and truly believes in the work that we're doing to fulfill the program of work that was put together and approved by folks like you that given us the, ignited us to move ahead, so we're excited about the work. And now, after a couple of years, being able to see that start coming to fruition in a very positive way, appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and if you can take up your information on our projects, that would be great.
I wrote all my notes on it.
I mean, if you would just promise not to distribute it.
Okay. I'll leave it with the manager after I put him on.
Thank you.
Or with the attorney. Thank you very much. Okay, good news. All right, next item on the agenda is Item B, the two thousand nineteen reappraisal timeline presentation by Mr. Michael Brown. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and other members of the board. Glad to be before you tonight. Hopefully, can share some information about the upcoming two thousand nineteen reappraisal. We have the two thousand nineteen reappraisal that's actually, we've actually started work on. What a reappraisal is, is basically where the Tax Office, under the guidance of Mary Al, Lisa Faulkner, Tax Administrator, Real Property Supervisor, where we have to value all property in the county. Again, we have to establish a new value for properties for January one, two thousand nineteen. So that's what we're looking to do with this new reappraisal for two thousand nineteen. They're mandated by the General Assembly every eight years. Currently, Lee County is on a four-year reappraisal cycle, and the last reappraisal was done in two thousand thirteen. The twenty-seventeen, the two thousand seventeen reappraisal was postponed, and so we're looking at two thousand nineteen in this time. We have approximately thirty-one thousand four hundred parcels to value when we perform this reappraisal. If you have in your packet, I think each of you have a copy of the timeline that we basically are looking at for the reappraisal. As we work through the reappraisal, our offices gathering data daily. We're looking at sales that occur in the county. We're going out and measure, measuring off and listing those properties and being sure that our data is correct. Data is very key with the reappraisal project, and as we work through it, reappraisal projects typically take a little over two years. After you end one reappraisal, you're basically looking at it, trying to look at and see, what did you do right, what did you do wrong with the last reappraisal, and you're trying to plan the next reappraisal. So as we move through studying sales, we'll be looking, as we go down through the chart here, developing values, doing statistical reviews of information, trying to establish what are the values and what should the values be for January one, two thousand nineteen. An important part that you will play in the reappraisal process would be the adoption of the schedule of values, and that's typically going to take place around in September to November of two thousand eighteen. So we will actually bring you the schedule of values. That is basically a toolbox for us to use with the reappraisal. It kind of helps us work with different information in the reappraisal process and how we value property for market value statutorily and also for any special guidance that the General Assembly would give for like programs where we have to value property like farmland, timberland, or horticultural land for the present use value program. So after we adopt our schedule of values, we would be mailing the notices out in February of two thousand nineteen. Then we would go through our informal and our formal appeals process, where we would actually listen to taxpayers who disagreed with the value, and they would actually be heard. We would meet with them formally in the office, go out in the field and meet with them in the field also, and then we would have the formal process, which is actually the Special Board of Equalization and Review, who you, the county commissioners, have appointed to hear appeals on your behalf. Also going on within the reappraisal, we have some special projects that we're actually working with that I'm sure you're familiar with a little bit of some of them, but pictometry, sketch verify, and the street-level imaging. The pictometry project is basically, we're almost through with it. We've had our last training session with it. The pictometry program is basically where we get a aerial photograph, which is a straight down shot, but also with that, we get oblique images, which basically gives us a forty-five-degree angle shot. Have some examples here of the building that we're actually in now, and we have the different views from the northeast, northeast, south, and west. This information also is available on the website as far as the oblique images here. With the pictometry, the symbol that you see in the bottom left, if you go to the interactive mapping on the website, the oblique images, the icon there with the circle with a cross through the north arrow is basically on that top bar. It's an icon on that when you get to the map of Lee County. It's on that top bar about Dead Center at the top. So that information, you can actually look at photographs and see some of the same information. We have a few other tools we work with with ours, but basically, the information for the photos is out there for public to view.
Are you using a plane or drone or what?
This is done, Company Pictometry actually does the flights for the county, and they actually do it by plane. Yes, sir. We have a sketch verify project that we're actually going through also. We're currently in that at this time. Tyler Technologies is actually taking our information that's in our Came, in our KAMA package, our Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal System. They're taking our information that we have, and they're taking the information from the pictometry, the view that they had, they took for the aerial photograph, which is a straight-down view, and they're actually taking and comparing the two sets of data. So if they find a difference in that data, then they're actually generating a report for us, and then we can actually go and look to see if that information's correct or verify that information on the ground.
So the picture on the right is they've added a garage?
Right, basically, we have, right, we have a, the one on the right is a yellow structure of a house. It looks like or appears as a garage or carport addition's been made, outlined in red. I've just done this just to kind of illustrate, this is not exactly what happened or take place, but this in a nutshell is kind of what they're doing for us. The one on the left is basically a structure of a house, and it looks like they've either built a covered porch or screen porch or such on the back of it. It's outlined in red. Then the last project we have is the street-level imaging, and basically, that's exactly what it is. It's actually a street-level project where we have new pictures or first-time pictures for the county of all the improved structures. So commercial buildings, houses and such as that, we will actually have a picture identified by the parcel number tied to that property. So that will help us in doing our work. Again, it's about data, having good data, and reappraisals, certainly, the state expects us to have good data for these reappraisals. They've actually put out some reappraisal standards to be used for the two thousand twenty reappraisal, so we're missing that by a year, but we're still looking to try to implement some of the things and some of the technology and try to move towards that so we will not be far behind in what they're requiring of us.
Are you using a van or a car to make your round? How do you, how do you?
Yes, sir. This is actually a designed, laid-out van specifically for this purpose. It has, you may have seen it riding through the county. I think it says on the side of it, Lee County Contractor. They actually, we notified the Sheriff's Department of the different areas that the county that they'll be in. I think that we probably have only a small portion, and I think the remaining sections, if I'm not mistaken, is toward the southwest section of the county that remains to be completed. So I think a lot of the town has been done, the north and east has been done. I think the southwest is the remaining portion to be done at this time, and I don't think it's, I think it's probably less than twenty percent left to be done at this time. But it is especially outfitted van. They've, it's rather, it's rather interesting. It's well laid out and is specific for this purpose of doing that.
Makes you nervous.
Well, we've had a few phone calls, not too many, but we've had a, we've had a couple.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, do you use this approach on every piece of property in Lee County?
You mean as far as taking a picture?
Yeah, and your aerial and all this.
The aerial photos have been done. That's some, that's a project that's been probably. That's something, that's a project that's been probably been going on for a number of years. I know that, I don't know what year you first acquired aerial photography in Lee County, but I would, I'm sure that you've probably had it through the 80s and 90s. I think those different layers and the different times that the aerial photographs have been captured are out on the website. I think they're available out on the website.
Do you also do, you do the aerial, you do the street too, on the same piece of property?
This is, this is the first time the street pictures have been taken in Lee County. So this is a first for that. But yes, we are looking at the street view of the, and we're going to tie this to the property record card. And then the oblique images, which is the pictometry that had the northeast, southwest kind of views to where you can see the different ways around it, we're using that to verify data also with the.
What I'm getting at, how do you approach a piece of property that's got a fence around it with a gate and the window let you in?
That is something that I think is probably better answered by Mary, but I think that we, those properties are being noted and probably being turned in to us for some type of later review.
You go to it every day.
I know the answer, but I want Mary to answer.
You don't want to have all the fun.
If there's properties that don't have access, that will be noted, because there will be some of that that should be minimal. If they can get a photograph, they will, they'll get the best photograph they can get. But there will be some gated-type properties that they won't have access to.
We have the aerial.
We have the aerial, so.
We're going to get you one way or another.
Well, we have, the straight down view is provided, the state is also in a project now where they actually are taking aerial photos every four years of each part of the state. So that's a rotating fund that actually was kind of generated with some E911 funds through a grant. So if you have any other questions, I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Technology, technology. Okay. We're going to move into the property items, and Ms. Megyn Dodson, welcome. What we decided to do was just put C and E together, and then we'll do D after. So Ms. Parrish, you'll do all the property issues at one time. So update on advertised surplus properties at Carolina Trace.
As Madam Chair, as you are very well aware at this point, that we do have the seven properties in Carolina Trace. Previously, the board deemed those properties as surplus properties and authorized me to advertise those properties for offers for sale bids. I advertised two properties, one in the Texas Square Division and one on Long Point Trail in the Sanford Herald on April 5th of 2017, asking for anyone who was interested to submit a sale bid. Those bids closed on May 5th at 3:00 PM, and there were no offers. The next item on, I guess it's page 84. That property is Eagles Nest Drive. That is in Carolina Trace. And at last board meeting on the, on the May 1st, the board accepted an offer to purchase that property from Kenneth Garrett on behalf of KG GLC for $2,326.77. That is the amount of taxes that are owed on the property, taxes and fees. The taxable value is $3,500. Advertised that in the newspaper on May the 4th of 2017, and the time to upset bids expired on May 14th of 2017. So at the time that the packet, the agenda was released, I just indicated that I would let you know whether or not there's an upset bid submitted or whether or not ask you to accept the bid from Kenneth Garrett to purchase the property and then to ask, authorize staff to enter into the, to execute the necessary documents to sell. So in your packet, it's added on, there were no further offers submitted. There was someone who was interested, but did not actually submit a, submit an offer on that property. So attached is the final resolution if you so find that authorizing the sale of the property and again, allowing the staff to go ahead and move forward with the sale. You'll also see the advertising calls that came from the Herald and this closing segment that I've prepared for this property as well.
Okay, let's take care of this one first. So you just need a motion to authorize the county staff to sell the property because there were no upset bids?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. And going back to the Carolina Trace, were we going to send letters to the adjoining property? Did we do that?
We did.
Okay.
I believe Mr. Michael did, and that's actually how we got interest in the Eagles Nest Drive.
Okay.
So we did send letters out, and that, just not on the other two properties, but at least we have, going to be selling one of the properties.
Right.
We'll be down to six.
So.
We have received a lot of inquiries because you just didn't mail a letter to Carolina Trace. I think you sent over a hundred letters.
That was for the Sanford and Lincoln.
The combined properties.
We're getting a lot of calls.
Okay, good. Okay.
Actually, on the next agenda, probably two more properties.
Okay.
You're doing a very good job of explaining it to people. I had a, I had a real senior citizen call me and was able to tell and explain to me what she'd already told. She said, just wanted to verify. I don't know her, but I know.
Just making sure she told you right.
That's who I go to, so you have to go to.
That's right, that's good to hear. Okay, well, you know, we'll have seven down, six to go, but I mean, we're moving in the right direction, so, all right. Okay. Take care of that. Okay, all right. Ms. Minter, request to approve audit contract with Thompson Price Scott Adams and Company P.A., and that's actually item D on our agenda. Hey, good evening.
Good evening. In April of 2015, the board approved a five-year audit services proposal with Thompson Price Scott Adams and Company for our annual audit. The local government commission and the state require, though, that an annual contract is approved. So I am bringing before you tonight the contract to audit accounts along with the engagement letter from our audit firm for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017. The cost as proposed when we took the proposals in 2015 is still $35,500. And those funds will be in the 2017-18 budget.
Okay.
Will be approved.
All right, any questions or discussion for Ms. Minter? This is just authorizing what we voted on for the five-year contract. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
And we'll get that report in October, is that what I, is that what I remember reading in the contract, something like that?
It's usually more like December.
Okay.
By the time this, and the reason for the delay a lot of times is the state doesn't publish the information we need for sections of the report.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Okay, and then we had added item F to new business, Krista Reeves' letter. Did you want to introduce this?
I will.
Okay.
I don't know how many of you may have seen the article in the New Zealand Observer, Sunday's New Zealand Observer, about the young man from here in Lee County Public Schools, who has been the recipient of over 30 scholarships. Eight of the Ivy League schools have offered full scholarship for both academic and football. And, you know, it's only fitting that when you have that kind of success, that it's money we've invested in his education, and we're seeing that it does pay off. You know, too many times I've heard, to include some former commissioners, criticize the school system about how bad it is. And this to me serves notice that it's not always about the school system, it's about the student and the parent at home. So the product here is one of only a few in the nation. As a matter of fact, it was quite interesting that back in January, I saw this young lady on the news in New Jersey who had received eight offers from Ivy League schools. And I was like, which we could have something like that sometimes.
And we did.
And lo and behold, you know, it happened, so.
Turn on your investment.
That's right. That's exactly what we're talking about. So I think it's only noteworthy that we at least acknowledge.
Absolutely.
Especially the parent. And by the way, I've never met this young man. This is the first time I've seen a picture of him. I don't know his parents, I don't know anything other than I felt honored and also received a call from a friend of mine in Wade County who said, "I can't believe your school system did that, produced that kind of product." You can believe it now? You couldn't believe it before, you can believe it now. So that's all, and I think we ought to, this forward, who makes the financial contributions, ought to acknowledge that individual and his parents.
And just side note, my two younger ones go to school with him, and he is a wonderful young man. No, 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 go ahead.
I think we ought to let Joey and Bob use that for economic development.
Wow. I bring that up at budget session. I bring that up at budget session. About that part.
But he is, he is a great young man, and.
Excuse me, I wanted to. Quite interestingly, I brought the superintendent's note about education and economic development. If you look at the one we received, I think we all got it. Lee County Schools.
They got it via email.
I'm sure they did. The point is, he makes the same note in his letter to us. Important part of economic engine supporting Lee County's education. So I think this is all very fitting, and certainly you're right, it needs to be a part of our discussion. Thank you.
And what we've constructed is a letter to Mr. Jimmy Smith. And if, I'll read it, and then we can take a vote. It's a pleasure of the board to pass this along to the young man. We have it where we can all sign it. And it says, Dear Mr. Smith, congratulations on your academic success at Lee County High School. It has been a pleasure hearing about all the successes you have had in the classroom and on the playing field. We know that you are only a junior at Lee County High School, but we are thrilled to hear about all the academic and athletic accomplishments as well as the many scholarship offers you have received so far. As a junior at Lee County High School, it can certainly be overwhelming having so many great opportunities to choose from, but we are sure that you will make the decision that is best for your future. Being a student athlete can be quite demanding, but we are confident that you will be successful in all that you do or all that you want to do in your life. Your achievements on the football field and in the classroom have garnered much attention. We know that this success was aided by many people important to you. We know your mom continues to be an inspiration to you. We are sure that your teachers, coaches, principals, the superintendent, and the Board of Education also provided you the opportunity to be the best you can be. They have been your role models, and now you are becoming a role model for everyone around you. Lee County is proud of not only your accomplishments, but the character you have shown in achieving your goals in life. On behalf of the Lee County Board of Commissioners, I want to again congratulate you on your accomplishments. We hope you enjoy your final year at Lee County High School, and good luck as you prepare for the next chapter in your life. And then sincerely, and we can all sign it. So is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Just don't leave before you sign the letter, and we'll get that to you. Okay. Good, good news. He's going to do great things.
Madam Chair, I got one thing before you move on. I didn't quite understand everything Mr. Thrash was saying about Commissioners Connect request. I'd like to ask that council confer with their council so that we can, at least I can get a better understanding. I don't know if you understood it or not.
I kind of understood it pretty well. It was open, I think they're subject, not subject to open meeting laws, therefore, they don't have to provide us any minutes, but maybe Doc and Tim could, if, could share. That's how, that's how I understood it.
You can go to their office and get them.
She says they provide board members with minutes.
Yes.
So board members here, they're on there, I don't know why they can't just disseminate that information to us.
That's why I'm suggesting that we get it clear.
That's okay for them to do that.
Because certainly at contract time, we need to understand what we're entitled to receive. Thank you.
Okay, any management support?
And I'll just skip to that part. We are at contract time with Saga. We do have a draft for our attorney and them, so as soon as we get comments back on that, hopefully we'll have that back to you. I put June 6th meeting, we don't meet on June 6th, we meet on June 5th, so I apologize for that. But I had that typed on there. But it is contract time, and if there's anything that folks want to see in the contract, again, you need to go ahead and give it to me or to Whitney. All right, Sand Lee Park, as much as we have tried to bring the project back on schedule, we are still 45 days behind working with the architect and the contractor to get this project finished in July, or August 15th, excuse me. Or July 15th, excuse me, is our next due date, that everybody seems to agree when the project will be finished. The park looks great. What's up right now looks awesome. So if any of the commissioners would like to take a visit, you do need to be escorted inside the fence line, and we can get that done. So just let us know. General Services is about finished at the old Bowman Alley. Finished the flooring last week, and they are doing the remaining plumbing. Once they do that, they have some painting they need to do, and then they can have the final building inspection done, and then they can notify State Building that the project is finished and the paint can come inspected. So we are really hopeful that in June, we will have all sign-offs and everything done, and can begin moving probation over there. Once again, that's a project that looks awesome, and I know probation's going to be happy with that space. Really, really, really some neat things we've done over there for them.
What about the wiring, putting in the internet, has that been done?
That's all been done. That was all done before we put up the sheetrock. So all that was wired in there. Kyle worked with the state IT folks, and everything is, will be up and running, ready to go. Just plug and, plug and go.
I just want to ask you. It looks like all the space hasn't been allocated yet.
That's correct. There's about 4,300 square feet that will remain that can be used.
And that's where you can use our state to help allocate that space to, see the best use for it?
We, the Register of Deeds has shown interest in moving across there. So we are going to take a look at that with the architect. Wish it was more simple than that, but trying to put a vault in an existing building requires someone who knows what they're doing. And that's a little bit hit above our pay grade, I believe, so.
To interrupt you for a minute on that line, you know, the conversation we had that. You know, the conversation we had at the last meeting. I called the DA's office and talked with Stephanie, and then she put me on the phone with Mr. Pleasance, and I requested that the DA call me back for us to get together and talk. And that was the Tuesday after our meeting, and I'm still waiting.
And I also spoke to Mr. Pleasant in the parking lot and told him to put all their requests in writing and send it over. And we hadn't got anything?
No. I haven't, have you? No. So we, we, we have, we're trying, Doc, but, you know.
Giving them an opportunity, that's all.
Right. I mean, I've, I've, I've reached out, and I'm gonna try to reach out again. I do know the, the DA was having some health issues, and he was not in the office when I called. But I still haven't received that call back. So I'm, I'll check in with him tomorrow.
Ma'am Chair, I would ask that, I think the manager's indicated he's gonna be discussing it with Architect. And they probably should submit something in writing to say that when that time arrives, they really need to have something in place.
What they need.
Yes.
I see it.
Yes. Otherwise, we need to move on.
I, I, I think that's...
But I've committed to writing.
We're working on the RFQ, and hopefully we'll have that out. We kinda got delayed putting the budget document together, so we'll get back on that. The OT Sloan Pool Project, the weather has wreaked havoc on us the last couple of weeks. Have not been able to do the painting, which actually was started back Thursday, April 13th. You have to go in and, you know, sand everything down and fill the cracks and do all that kinda stuff. All that, all that's basically finished, and they needed some dry weather. And this week is the week. So as long as we don't anticipate any rain, we are hopeful that most of that project, the painting, will be finished in the next week or two. And then we still have the issue of getting the filtration tanks and the heaters in. But right now, we're kinda under the gun to have it finished by Memorial Day, but they're pushing to have it done. That's the way that goes. Colton Road Water, just wanted to give you an update there that we're working with the engineer right now, doing preliminary work. We're trying to get a letter together for the property owners. And I wanted to, there was, I guess, some confusion about who we were gonna send this letter to. I wanted to remind everybody that there are actually sixty-two property owners within the half-mile impact radius of the site. I know there was a lot of concentration on the twenty-four people who got the letters about their, their well testing, but, you know, for the coal ash coming in and using the state kind of area that they looked at around the other coal ash sites, you know, we had designated a half-mile radius for that. So sixty-two people will get that letter as soon as we finalize it and have it dated for when we can get the engineer and our staff together to meet with property owners. They'll have to sign some documents. They'll have to be notarized. So we wanna make sure we have that all together. And once again, you know, kinda as we've been talking, one of the big hurdles that has come up and that we're gonna have to work with the engineer on is the dirt roads and how we get access of the water lines there. So I think we have a plan, but I'm not ready to discuss it just yet. So not until an engineer tells me it's feasible. The budget is complete. It is written at this point. We're going to print, and you should have your copy on Thursday. So we'll be meeting next Monday, May 22nd, in the Gordon Wicker Room. We will not be meeting here. If you walk in here, you're gonna walk into the Parks and Rec Advisory Board Meeting. So, you know, I'm sure they'd be glad to see you, but our meeting is in the other part of the building. Mayor Donald Andrews will also be there to present the fire department's recommended budgets. So we'll have him up first because he has to get to Broadway by seven for his board meeting, so it's a busy night. In your, in your packet, I had put a report, mainly just for your information about the Raleigh Executive Jetport Master Plan. It was a pretty cool deal, I thought. And once again, it comes back to how, how is the property around the airport gonna be developed? Not just what's gonna be developed on the airport. And I think there's a lot of concern about encroachment. So I put that report in there. It makes for some good reading, and then all the other monthly reports are in there. Upcoming meetings, next Monday, I said, was the budget meeting. Then I have the wrong dates there. I apologize for that. June 5th is the first Commissioners' meeting in June, when we have the public hearing for the budget. And then June 19th. And then, as we voted at the last meeting, July starts the once-a-month meeting for Gordon's. July, August, and September. I do have one other thing. The hotels for the NCACC Conference in August. August 10th, 11th, and 12th are going fast. So if you want to go or are considering, because we can always book a room and then cancel. If you're considering to go into the NCACC Conference in Durham, I think that's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, need to go ahead and tell Jennifer now so that the main hotel's already booked, and so they're into the two hotels surrounding that hotel, and there are not a lot of rooms, so.
And registration's also open for the NACO. Okay, we need to, everybody take a look at that, too.
Yeah, I didn't look at NACO. I just know that the, the hotel, I mean, they haven't even opened up registration for the NCACC Conference yet, and the hotel rooms are already getting booked.
Okay. All right.
Interesting deal there. Do you want me to go into the CCCC projects? Let me get back there to that. I asked the Community College to send this over to me last week. It was nice of them to do so in such a quick way. I think the first thing you should notice on page one hundred and forty is that they are moving along pretty quickly on the new Emergency Services Training Building. They are in construction pretty heavily on that building and all the improvements that they're doing out there. So they expect to be completed in November, which doesn't, which sounds like a long way away, but it's not. So that's great to see that project on its way. The Community College various interior renovations, that's actually a project that will be finished last because they have to have the new building completed first before they can get into Joyner and Hockaday Halls. And so they expect to have that completed in May to August. August for Joyner Hall and May 2018 for Hockaday. Then the Vet Tech building actually came, is, you know, starting to come out of the ground a little bit. They've already finished all the gradium work there and hope to be finished in April 2018. Pretty cool. And then I went by the Civic Center and the Health Sciences Building last week, and they are working on the pads for those buildings and are quickly moving along as fast as they can now. So that's a, a good thing, that they have all of them under contract and all of them under con- construction at this point. So at some point in the next couple of months, I'm sure we'll have them come and talk about where they are from.
I noticed, I think it was either Thursday or Friday, they made a road exactly where the road we've been talking about would be.
Well, they, in that project, they have, what is it, six hundred feet? I think it's six hundred feet of Kelly Drive that they are going to build.
So I know that, or, or this is just my personal opinion, but now that we have a visible road there, it would be a good time. And I know we keep talking about, but, you know, I think Mr. Sloan, he was going to reach out to those two gentlemen, and I did hear from him that he was not gonna be able to make it tonight, but hopefully he's got an appointment with some dates that we can meet with him, and hopefully they can come. And now that we actually have a visible, you know, something they can look at as to how it will work, will, will be nice. I was surprised to see that take place over the last couple of days. That went by, and I was like, oh, my gosh, there's a road, or the beginning of it anyway, possibly. Okay? Anything else?
Nothing else. We're just, want you to know, there's a lot going on. If you read your building inspection report and the TRC agenda, I just got a, you know, the other TRC for the agenda for next week. That's how I knew about the airfield and suites. There is a lot going on. And I'm happy to tell, you know, Commissioner Sharp sent me an email about environmental health being behind, and they admitted they were behind. But I got an email from Mr. Kane today. They are back up, and, you know, it's taking a normal amount of time for them, again, to get those permits done. He is actually helping out with the pool permits as everybody's opening the pools. So I think they'll be all right. He's insistent that he doesn't need anybody new at this point, even though I made the offer to change his budget. And so at that point, it was time to get the budget going, so.
How much, ten and a half million and two hundred and ninety-seven permits?
Yes, ma'am.
Pretty good?
The Building Inspections Department is flying.
They are.
And they are looking at additional personnel.
Yep, they are. So that's, it's a good sign. Sort of flat for a long time, so that's a good sign.
For two years in a row, we will, the Building Inspections Department will make a small profit, where we won't have to pay anything into the department. So that's pretty exciting.
That's pretty exciting.
I think the city just approved the hiring of an additional inspector.
Yeah, and the, the mayor, the mayor has talked to me about that, yeah. And as we grow, that's something, you know, to, to pay attention to and consider, for sure.
But the fee schedule we have in place obviously is working. You know, they can hire more staff as things are going, so it looks good.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Quentin? All right, thanks, Sean. Okay, Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Dodson, glad to see you here safe. You had a busy afternoon.
Yeah.
Keeping us, keeping us all safe. Glad you got here.
I apologize for being late. I had a, my court was training a new guy, so I hadn't got there to answer more calls along the woods to supervise him, so largely at Walmart, to prevent him from possession of heroin. And the bad thing is, just passing on to you, you know, we have this epidemic in Solace City, too. Small town under ten thousand. But the thing is, this young lady was crying, you know, talking about her habit, bad habit, trying to get help. It's that, but yet, she lost her friend last week in Solace City, an overdose, and she died of heroin. Only used five times, you know, the, who would have thought that'd be enough to change her? But, but you're right, I do apologize. But keep in your prayers, I'm fighting mad old cold, and my niece is getting married this weekend. I hope I feel all the way.
I have not spoken to her about that.
Well, we'll stick you up with some vitamin C and get some rest.
A good dose, though.
Doctor Connect, give you some, some kind of, kind of your best. Glad you're here, Doc.
Thank you.
I think, except hopefully all those that are mothers, I agree with.
Commissioner Reeves mentioned the, the young fellow, Smith, that got all the, was getting all the scholarships and everything. But I just wanted everybody to know that Lee County's women's softball team is like twenty-four and more or something like that playing right now. And by the way, this young lady's been pitching no hitters. I'm probably, it's probably over by now. She's got like seven no hitters and going to East Carolina University and full scholarship, so. If they win tonight, then we can, maybe we can catch them at the end of the week, again.
Yep. They are rolling. Good, good group of girls.
They're in the final sixteen in the East. I think that's what it is. And they're number one in the league.
Yep. Yep, so all their games will be here, so we get good Raleigh, hopefully.
I'm gonna feel the void Commissioner Pascal left. I'm reminding everybody about the whole meal crankup.
I was gonna say that, too. The first time there was Mr. Pascal.
Twenty-first this month, Saturday and Sunday, whole meal crankup. It's worth going to. I try to make it every year.
Shouldn't name it after you.
You know, that's a great idea. Mm-hmm. Lot, lot of people don't remember how it used to be done. Good time to see history, for sure.
I'm gonna ask the question sometime. One of that culture meetings I hear is about, how many people understand how to talk to a mule? How do you even talk to a mule? How do you think farmers used to plow? They didn't always have John Deers and Fomos, mules. And I, I doubt there's many people understand that you can talk to one. Now, you know, they're honorary, they got big ears, and, but they're smart, too.
I know some people that are.
Commissioner Reeves?
I got a couple of things. I received a call, and I won't say it was a complaint, but it's a workforce development piece, again, about the clients not being paid in a timely manner. Party indicated to me that they were supposed to have been being paid by Central Piedmont Community Action, and that they may, they may be suspended or possibly dismissed. I don't know, and I explained to them, I don't serve on that board. I don't know how it goes. But once again, it raises a question. What's going on? So perhaps...
So handle my work for, about my whole job.
It is, and it's a community college.
I have to go over Robert for another reason. I'll be glad to talk to him about it.
Thank you. And President Dodson, we've got a situation here in the city. There's a rental property that is for people with disabilities, both physical and mental. And they're having problems with people coming in off the streets into the complex. I think about a week ago, in one of those late-night storms, they kicked the door in, and the police would call, and the whole works. I, I don't know, 'cause I was not there. But it's being managed by Brick Capital. And Ms. Rumley was there late at night alone before the police got there. We don't, she does not seem to be able to make good contact with Daymark, so I'm asking, as our rep, to talk with Ms. Witt, see if she can arrange for a meeting with Daymark, Ms. Witt, and Ms. Rumley. You know, the, the fear is obvious. There's a lot of danger there. People on medication, off medication, and then street people come in on it. So, and they can't count on me coming over there because that's, that's a potential for something to go wrong, and we oughta head it off as quickly as we can. And the city has been helpful, but there, some of the clients need help. It's what the real problem is. So if you would just get with Ms. Victoria Witt.
Sure, I'll talk to her.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the other piece is, and I've talked to Commissioner Sloan and Commissioner Oldham about it. You know, one of the things we all need to be mindful of, we do our best to make this the best county in the state. But there seems to be a problem with some folks running us down who live here. And you, you, it's a bad situation because we're spending money to market the county, and then it turns out that some of the same people who wanna be sitting on this board and other boards are running the county down. So you, you gotta remember, if they read good things... So, you, you gotta remember, if they read good things about us, they'll read the bad things, too. Some people are promoting the bad intentionally, and, and I believe that. So, we all need to be mindful that you're spending good money and using poor judgment and bad comments. Does not help us at all. That's it, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Just a couple of things. It's, it's been a really busy couple of weeks. We had the cooperative extension report to the people last week and that was well-attended. Commissioner Odom and Commissioner Sloan and county manager were there. And we ate well and, and agriculture is booming in Lee County and cooperative extension plays an important role. Got, got, got a really good report on that. Especially this time of year, I encourage you, if you've got problems with plants or your yard or wanna know why something's not growing, call them. They're happy to help. Commissioner Sloan and Manager Crumpton and I also got to do one of my favorite events and that's go to the nineties luncheon at the Enrichment Center last week as well. And I tell you, they're spry bunch out there. I had gotten to talk to a lot of them afterwards. And it's always nice to see them and, and hear their stories. We had a, a meeting, the manager and I did with the superintendent and with Chairman Akonasho for the Board of Education to just talk about school and the future. And had a really good meeting with them. Enjoyed the National Day of Prayer. Reverend McGinnis at the City Hall had a, had a really good program there that day. Perfect day for the National Day of Prayer. I don't think, we've had that nice day in a long time. It poured down rain last time. Arts and Bonds was a success after the clouds cleared. A lot of people showed up for that. And the manager and our attorney and Mr. Silverman and I got to go to the Legislative Assembly Day last Wednesday? Last week was kind of a blur. We had a lot going on. But we were able to meet with Senator Raven and with Representative Salz and Representative Reeves and had really good meetings with them. It was nice that they took time. Their very busy schedule with committees and caucusing and everything going on, going on. It was just sort of, the Senate had just released their budget that day. So, we actually saw the carts with the budgets being rolled around the Legislative Office Building. So, got some updates and both Representative Salz and Senator Raven felt like we would get some form of occupancy tax passed this time. So, we'll see. Maybe third time's the charm, we're hoping. But we talked about funding the schools a lot. And I don't know if you followed the Senate budget, but restoring some lottery funds and we're hopeful that that certainly stays in the budgets. And, and that'll help us out a lot with the Dobey Wicker Project. So, that, it, it was a really good day. Again, great weather, as well-attended by commissioners from across the state. And hopefully, Mr. Silverman and Ms. Parrish enjoyed it. That's one of, one of the good days in the year, too. Couple of items. I was out at an event at Kiwanis Park on Saturday and just to pass along to Mr. Payne, because I didn't get a chance to talk to him. But one of the things, and I don't know if we have it at the other parks, but there's plenty of trash receptacles to go along with Doc's concern, which I completely agree with. But we all had these and there was no recycling container. It was just throwing it all in the trash can. So, several, as a matter of fact, Ms. Kennedy's son, you know, about this tall, said, where's the recycling bin? You know, we didn't have one. So, you know, maybe we, we could do that. If we don't have those at the parks, that would be nice because, you know, usually I'll try to take my own water bottle, but sometimes, especially if you're at events and stuff, everybody has the plastic water bottles and it'd be nice if we could recycle those. Just an aside. And, let's see, I was trying to think if there's anything else. Again, there's just a lot going on. Oh, and one other thing, I know everybody's probably aware of the, what is it, the ransomware hacking that was internationally done on Friday. And I just, you know, out of curiosity, as far as our county's concerned, I reached out to Kyle Edwards this morning to talk to him. And bless his heart, he tries to walk me through IT. It's a struggle. But, you know, he does such a great job and assured me that we were very, very well-protected. And he wasn't, you know, he said, there's always that fraction of a percent. But he felt like we were in good shape, even with, you know, users from the outside that don't have as much protection on their computers coming in. It'll stop it. So, no worries there. So, that's the IT report for Mr. Edwards. That's all I have.
Let me mention one thing. I don't know how many of you attend the mayor's prayer breakfast, but that's one super event. If you've never been, you get the opportunity, go to the mayor's prayer breakfast. Great speakers. I mean, it's just a good program, super program.
I wanna mention, and I can't recall whether we called this young man's name or not. His name is Jamir Sizik. And his mother's name is Monique McLean. He has a four-point four-three grade on average and received over thirty scholarships.
As a junior.
Yeah. He almost beat my record.
I saw that four-point three and thought it was his forty-yard dash time, but it was a grade point.
That's why I didn't get one.
Well, and, and we, we, we have so many good stories like that. The, the school system is doing a great job. I mean, I, I can attest to that. I'm having two in it right now. But anyway, okay? Any other items or comments or questions?
Would you, Jerry?
All right. All those in favor say aye. All right. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.